One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you'd call the roll, please, Joan.
Mayor Swenson, Councilor Porter, Councilor Tate, Councilor Bachel, Councilor Christianson.
Here.
Okay, and, yeah, so the, the discussion on the Berserker Cup, it won't happen till about 12:30, so we're gonna start out with the blight compliance program, and I think, I talked to, you know, I think one of the council members had suggested we need to do something about blight, and one suggestion was to send out letters to all the landlords and let them know that we're gonna be enforcing the ordinance, and either send them a copy of the ordinance or refer them to the website or whatever, that, and maybe the, maybe the blight ordinance and the rental ordinance, and then maybe, you know, maybe if the council approves that, you know, after two blight notices and they're still not compliant, that they lose their rental license and so forth, so, I don't know.
Can we change any of the, whatever it is?
Joan, Joan feels that we, the ordinance pretty much covers everything.
Do ya?
Except, except maybe the rental part of it, I don't know, or maybe the rental ordinance.
The rental ordinance covers a little of that, I'd have to look at the exact wording of that, but...
To see if they can lose their, their permit or license or whatever.
After so many calls, I think it says, but we could, we'd have to look at that part of it again to tie those two together.
But if we just started hiring somebody to go in and clean up, and then that just goes against the...
That would be assessed to their taxes, so that's kinda like the higher penalty, 'cause if we had to hire, then the cost of that can be assessed to, well, first they receive an invoice, but if they don't pay the city for that, then it can be assessed to their taxes.
Right, right.
So you take your way to do that, okay.
So I've been thinking about different organizations, or maybe, like John Choice could do mowing or something, and Steve Grothie could pick up metal and stuff like that, and, you know, if anybody has any ideas for any local businesses or whatever that could pick up or clean up blight situations.
And even wouldn't that be good if, in the letter that Steve actually comes and picks up stuff for free, if it's too heavy, he can't get it, but, whatever, I don't, some of these dokes may not know that, and that, not that they would make them haul, I don't know.
Well, maybe you could hire somebody to help, help them pick it up and, and charge, charge for it or whatever.
I don't think threatening to take away the rental permit is adequate response, I think having someone come in and doing the cleanup for them if they don't comply in time.
Oh, that would be the first step, yeah.
First step, and then, when would the taking away of the rental permit occur?
Well, that's something we could decide, you know.
I think that'd be a case-by-case basis.
After two notices, do we do a cleanup?
The third notice is a cleanup.
I, yeah.
And then...
Second, maybe a second notice.
I think the biggest thing would be on, if the reimbursement doesn't happen, if everything just goes onto the tax roll, then it might have to be an issue where the rental permit might be...
And really, that puts the burden back on owner, not, not the renter, and then the owner can decide, you know, should these people stay, you know, whatever, because there's a lot of, you can't just, you know, kick renters out, there's a lot of process you have to go through.
So, yeah.
Well, and I, I think there should be some extra enforcement, too, along the two main highways and the bike path, you know, like if you look at the building between Shirley's and the bait shop, you've got all those boats, you know, some of them not even on trailers, just resting in that lot there, too, like, you know, I get it if you're like inside...
Is that next to the bait shop?
Ted's crap sitting there.
I think Ted owns that lot.
Okay, but, but still, I mean, like, those boats are unmoved, why are they just being stored there, you know, if you're gonna store them like that, put them in a shed or something so it's not a visibility thing, you've got long grass growing alongside them, and then, yeah, I mean, just the main drag, that's people get their first impressions when they come to town, and you want that to look good, and the same with the one across from, I think it was Sabrina, Sabrina's place, you know, great, great service that she's trying to provide, you know, accepting free donations and giving them, but like, putting stuff on the sidewalk and then being able to see from the street all that stuff inside of her lot, you know, just like piled up, like, I'm sorry, but it's...
She owns all the stuff away in the back.
I'm not sure.
'Cause there's a truck back there, there's tires back there, there's wood, stuff.
But if the blight notice gets sent to the owner, Lance Bailey, he can distinguish which renter needs to take care of their stuff.
Yeah, perfect, and even if she had some fencing to this.
Anything, I mean...
She could still get in and get out, and like you said, it's a nice jest what she's doing with her little ladder and stuff, but...
I just, I, I feel like it's kind of embarrassing for myself, living in town and seeing that and being like, you know, this is the impression you give to people, and so I think, yeah, being, being more strict with the enforcement of the blight is especially relevant on the main drags there.
And even the upkeep of the building itself, that building needs a lot of attention, so all that's in the ordinance.
And the, and the ordinance covers that, both, you know, covers exterior maintenance and so forth.
Is that city beautification grant money, is that all done, was that a project from a few years ago, or is that still a...
Well, I think it's, what we had in the past is over, but we can apply again, I think, but I'm not sure when the application period is.
Well, and there's a few other avenues, like, you know, the chamber would maybe be willing for outdoor...
It is a commercial business.
Beautification, yeah.
Yeah.
They gotta take care of the front.
They, yeah, they cover fifty percent up to $2,000 for building improvements.
Is that just front, though?
Storefront, yep.
Storefronts.
So the two sides would apply to it, then?
Yep, 'cause it's a corner lot, so...
But I mean, even, even just, you know, fresh paint on that building would do wonders and get nowhere close to 2,000, but, no, I, I agree that get strict with sending out of the warnings and then put in the warnings that we will have, send a cleanup company to come and assess the property owner.
I think we do need to just start sending them, so people don't think it's just...
Yeah.
So you think this, letters to the landlord, the second one should be that we're cleaning it up, or that we just go ahead and clean it up after ten years?
I think, I think the first one should mention that, you know, if non-compliance occurs, you know, we will investigate bringing in a third party to do cleanup, and then the second one would be like, alright, non-compliance has occurred, so you have two weeks.
And then give them a timeline, yeah, two weeks.
Yeah, you have two weeks, and then we're sending in this company, so that way they, they know from the first warning that what's coming.
Because that's all set out in the blight letters that we have sent out in the past, and if the police department's doing it, I don't know if they'll wanna use the same letters or something different, but that's all like set up, set out in that letter.
And that kinda brings me to, you know, the second part of it, is it was, right now it seems to be kinda up in the air who's enforcing the blight program, and, you know, and, so, I've talked with Mitch, and he's willing to take it on, and we'll just turn it over from the office to Charlene and the police department to enforce it, and I, I see in other cities, like, I think it was Wheaton or Montevideo, the police department kinda handles that and so forth.
I think Alexandria might even be the police department.
Yeah, could be, yeah, so, so anyway, that, I don't know what everybody thinks of that, but...
And you think you'd back it up with the rental, jerking the rental lease, or...
What do you mean, the...
Well, like you said, we'll send it in to cleanup, and if this is occurring, then perhaps we're gonna have to take your rental permit away.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
So should it be all in one letter, or...
I think maybe it would be two separate topics, and we'd have to look at what we could really do in that area, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I'd be hesitant to put that language in there without talking to an attorney, because it'd open us to a lawsuit right away, then, and what, what percentage of the people would even be eligible for that route, you know, maybe five percent if that, you know, so let's cross that bridge when you get to it, and then we can talk about pulling the rental permit.
And, I think Joan...
The rental permit is in there?
That's just, if you haven't paid up, they're not gonna give, the city, unless I'm reading it wrong, right there, number five.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, I guess we'd have to look at ninety point zero one zero seven, number five, 'cause it does mention revoking permit in there, too, we might have to revise...
Is that state law?
No, that's part of our city, um...
City ordinance, rental ordinance.
Yep, and we might have to revise the language in that, then, too, to also include...
I mean, we'd have to take a look at it.
Right, if even, yeah, we have to take a look at it and see.
And then just have a separate pamphlet for renters, or, you know, rental owners that you hand out with it.
Landlords, they get it when they sign up as a...
Just, well, but this, if they get a blight notice of the, a landlord could get that, knowing that that is an option, that if they don't comply...
That yellow paint across from the liquor store on the curb, what, do you know what the deal is with that?
No.
Have you noticed that, where it's kind of indicating it's a no parking zone on the main highway?
I can double check, but I don't know what the reason for it.
Okay.
Where is that, Dave?
Across from the Menlo Esco Liquor.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know if MINDOT would have to correct that, if it's a problem, or...
If anything, it would, means that it's on the state highway.
So, that doesn't technically qualify as blight, but it is kind of weird that you have one small strip of yellow paint on the main highway, and there's no visible reason why it would exist, so...
I've been, I've been talking to the traffic engineer, district traffic engineer, Trudy Cordowski, and I can mention it to her, too, when we get together next, so...
I know, I know, so just east of the liquor store, there is like an alley access on the opposite, it's almost like it's perfectly adjacent to it, but there'd be no reason why you'd have to have yellow paint for an alley, 'cause there's no crosswalk or anything, so, just, just something weird that to look into, so...
Well, our people for these other events are coming until 12:30, so I think we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, there is a memorial bench for Dave Nickturn, maybe you wanna talk about that, Joan?
Yeah, Gloria stopped in and gave us this picture, that's the bottom one, and they'd like to put up, in those same colors, and they'd like to put up a bench either six foot or eight foot, their preference would be somewhere across from Shirley's there, and it would just say "in memory of" and Dave Nickturn on there, so, they would, I believe the plans are to put a concrete base underneath it.
I was gonna say, I think you'd almost have to.
Yeah, yeah, so...
And then the state would be fine with us putting, 'cause it's in there right-of-way.
It would have to be far enough back, or...
Beyond the bike path or...
Yeah, because, um...
Didn't you say there was another bench there?
At one point, there was a bench there.
There were some benches before the road were...
Before the road project.
But if we put a concrete pad, if it's in there right-of-way, do we need to get a approval from MINDOT?
Um, I don't even know, we'd, we would ask, I think they'd have to be outside of the right-of-way.
Well, how far out can we go, isn't that like kind of wetland back there anyways?
Yeah, I mean, it might not be an option, so...
The right-of-way covers where your sign just went, past that is the right-of-way, almost.
So again, it's where my sign is?
So where that sign, where the new golf cart sign is, right across from Shirley's?
Oh, okay. That is a part of the right-of-way?
That is still a part of the right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think the right-of-way is gonna be in the wetland, so we'll probably have to get approval.
Yeah, it's good approval.
Yeah.
Which I think it'd be a good spot to have one, we just need to get approval.
Yeah, well, we can ask if they consider it.
But then the, the plan would be that they would pay for the bench and the concrete base?
Right, right, right.
Yeah, if we could get, like, DNR approval on that, I don't think that would be an issue.
I don't think that would be an issue for anybody.
Who doesn't like a bench?
Would she say she wants to order it, because it takes quite a while?
Well, she thinks, yeah, it's taken quite a while to order it, so...
Would be a...
But we'd need to approve it.
Maintenance-proof bench?
Mm-hmm, it'd be just like this one that's in the picture there, yeah, it's recyclable materials, you know, that really heavy-duty plastic, like they make aderondic chairs and stuff out of, but it, I mean, we'd have to approve it at a council meeting, and we could approve it with a condition that MINDOT gives their approval, if it's within the right-of-way.
Okay, let's move on to the next issue, is watering city plants, I guess some of you know that Derek Cook has, has had some medical issues and hasn't been well enough to do the watering of the plants and stuff, and I think, Chris, you said the hanging plants are coming today?
They just showed up today.
They just showed up today, so we got more plants to water, and fortunately, we've had a lot of rain, so it hasn't been a real big problem, but, so, and Derek doesn't have any health insurance, 'cause he's only part-time employee and so forth, so, I don't know if the council would wanna consider maybe hiring him full-time, did, does he have to be full-time to get insurance?
Mm-hmm.
They do, okay, so I don't know if the council would consider hiring him full-time, or if we wanna look at hiring another summer help to do watering or whatever, so...
What, the two that we just hired, then, are they unable?
Pretty much tied up with whatever projects Mike and Randy have for him, so...
I don't know if a full-time watering plant thing, especially because it's not year-round...
Well, he works at Hobo and stuff, too.
I don't get that, but, it's a significant cost to the city, then, to worry about insurance and benefits and...
What do you think, Joan?
Yeah, I don't think that is a good route to go personally, but, um...
Is there a cost to the city, or...
Yeah, uh-huh, you would have the health insurance and then all the benefits, you've got the para, you've got the life insurance, you've got the...
And the city pays a portion of that.
Yeah.
Wages would probably, would that change, or...
No, that wouldn't necessarily change, but, you're kinda thinking that, what, so he would have insurance, right, is, are you talking about Derek, or are you talking about a new person?
Talking about Derek, so he could get medical help.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a really nice thing to do, but...
Because he's been a real asset to the, to the city in a lot of ways.
He probably is already a full-time blight...
Probably is, honestly, probably is.
Not, not all for the city, though.
Oh, yes, well, that stuff he does.
But, but the other, the other option is to hire another summer help or whatever, or to let volunteers do it, but it's, you know, everybody has jobs and so forth, and...
Could it be an extension of one of the lifeguards, if they wanted to earn a few more bucks?
Could be, if there's anyone that wanted to do that, thing is, it's a pretty consistent, I mean, you're, they, most of them leave so early, but it'd be a solution for a while, yeah, right.
Particularly in the spring, or when they first plant, you gotta water almost every day, you know?
But you're just looking for right now, right, the southern fall?
Mm-hmm.
I just, you know, lifeguards are always looking for a thing that doesn't open till midnoon, they could water, and, yeah, and a little extra money to the pot.
Yeah.
So, I got one kid's name on mine here, I'll give him a call, and I told those bank chicks up there that it wouldn't hurt them to grab a gallon, take a couple slugs and water those flowers, and she said, "We could do it," so...
So we've, we've heard from a couple people that might have some, some ideas for hiring somebody to do watering and so forth, so...
Would that be using the city's new ATV, then, too, to go around and do that, and haul a water tanker, or...
They, it'll, yeah, they can, uh-huh, as long as they have a license and stuff, yeah.
Valid license, yeah, so that's the other concern, I don't know, the lifeguards are not, but if they're licensed, I would assume, I think they are, so...
Well, to drive a city vehicle, they'd have to be eighteen, but, yeah.
What about a four, four by four?
Oh, we'd have to call and ask, to be safe, they should be eighteen, you know, but that might, I, I'd say eighteen probably for...
I was thinking of Peyton Jones, sure, you know, he's watered, he has his own business, but he's a very good little worker.
Isn't that the one we just hired, though?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we hired him down there for mowing and stuff, and he came up a little earlier, just about, all these other kids do it.
The other thing is, some of these kids are farm, you know, from a farm, and probably been driving vehicles for...
Well, yeah, not that they wouldn't be competent, it's just insurance-wise, they, yeah.
But he'd be older than that, but...
Oh, yeah.
And there might be some retired person that would like to do it.
You?
That'd be nice if we could find him.
Yeah, if I had time, asshole, I would, if there were retired, I think it'd be good for your wrist, or your arm.
Yeah.
I would, I would do it, yeah, but the broken elbow, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, cry us a river.
Yeah, so we'll probably be bringing that up at the council meeting, and, you know, maybe between now and then, get some more information and figure out what we need to do, so...
Yeah, I know Mary Beth Noyes down at Hobo Park said her grandson is looking for a job, he's like fifteen, and she would be willing to drive with him while he watered. I don't know they wanna do that every day of the week, but, you know...
Would she be on the clock, then, while she's helping him out, or...
Well, no, I mean, even that wouldn't work.
At least that's what you understand, that.
Yeah, right, I, you know, I'm not there to monitor every second, but, yeah.
Okay, okay, well...
Well, I'll make a couple of calls to these guys here, and if we're going to, I'll have them come right down and talk to you.
Um, yeah, we should, yeah, we'll put them on the list, they could fill out an application for sure, and, what are you thinking, like, the parameters would be, like, how many times, I know it depends on the weather, but how many times a week, three times, four times?
Probably, probably three, once they get established, I think, at the beginning, you almost have to do it daily, as long as...
Yeah.
They have to fertilize about every week or two, I would say two weeks, Cindy Burgess would probably say every week, or every day, but, so...
Well, they're home there, so we gotta get somebody to do it, we got a couple that would be helpful, and, so we can get to it, hopefully this week, supposed to have a lot of rain, probably line up somebody.
Sounded like it.
Right.
So, okay, I thought Nick Rogers would be here by now, but...
Oh, no, I have to disconnect.
Yeah, I don't know, Ryan, if you needed to go or something?
No, the other thing would be the Berserker Cup, figuring out...
Yeah, if you wanted to stick around for that, I think that's the, the next thing that we'll discuss, is that, so, and I told them about 12:30, so, should be here pretty quick, so...
Do you wanna, we could talk about the kayak.
I don't, I don't know if we'd wanna do that, because I think that might take a little bit, and we can start into that, and then switch gears for the, I anticipate there's gonna be quite a bit of discussion for the kayak thing, so...
See, Jason's here, hi, Jason. Good. Lori, right behind you?
There comes Nick.
Oh, okay.
When is the car show at the city park, what is the date of that one?
It's the first weekend in August.
First week of August?
Yep.
That's the same time as the artisan-
Artisan market and there's usually a bunch of reunions.
You know, last year's, no.
Dragon Boat's the second weekend in August, so.
And then this twenty-fourth, would that, I don't have a calendar in front of me, that'd be the third or fourth?
That'd be the third weekend.
Well, can look here quick. Yeah, the first weekend in August is like Friday, Saturday, second, third, second weekend is ninth and tenth and so there'd be like a week in between Dragon Boat and-
Gotta fill it up with something.
Berserker, yeah. Looking for ideas. Hi, Nick, wanna come up? I don't know if you wanna see it or if you wanna come up to the lectern or whatever. Everybody, this is Nick Rogers who represents the Berserker Cup and city staff and myself kinda made the decision to already line up the time at the city park and what we told Nick is that we would charge him what we normally rent out the shelters for, you know, for the for that day, plus if they want some additional porta-potties or something.
Yeah, which I've actually looked into and we'll get that taken care of, so. Unless you guys know of a place that charges less, 'cause they want five hundred dollars, so.
We get everything through HPS, is that what you went through?
HPS, I believe that might have been who it was, so, yeah, which is fine.
Yeah, they provide them at the beach and so forth, in the park and everything.
Awesome, well, thank you guys for giving me a few moments to chat with you a little bit about the event. Gary knows what it is, but basically it's a USA sanctioned Strongman event. If you guys ever see World's Strongest Man on ESPN, things of that sort, it's one of those events. And again, it is USA Strongman sanctioned, so it's a qualifier for national events for these athletes. We've done this two years, this will be our third year. Normally we were holding it at the Carlos Creek Winery and we decided to maybe come down here to help promote the town and to have a little more control over what we can do at the event as far as vendors and things of that sort, plus it's fantastic scenery. It's gonna look beautiful for photos and we have a photographer that comes out every year and takes photos and stuff for us, so. We just felt like it was a good fit.
Do you have some agreement with MediaCom?
Uh, not yet, we're hoping. We've been in talks with their MediaCom channel, Sports Channel twenty-two to try to start streaming the event on their, on their channel. It hasn't come to fruition yet, but we are in talks with a few guys who follow Strongman nationwide on YouTube to come out and actually cover the event, so we're trying to get exposure for the places that we're holding the event at as well. We usually have five particular lifts during the event, one's a vehicle pole, we have a deadlift, things of that sort. Men, women compete, young, old, we have a masters division and we, I think we give out fifty-six medals. And we've got some really nice medals being made this year, as well as an overall, overall winner gets a very large silver cup for the Berserker Cup overall winner. They all get vouchers from some of our sponsors, Cerberus and Valkyrie Strength have jumped on board to give them sponsors, so these guys and gals really get a, a lot for coming out and doing these competitions. To kinda give you a background at a, at a small level, local level, these, these events are usually fifty people and the majority of those are people competing. We, in our first year, had almost forty athletes competing and we had almost three hundred people there at the event to watch and spectate, which is kind of unheard of for a first-time event. Our second year, we had close to sixty athletes ranging as far as Canada and we had nearly five hundred. We had over four hundred people attending the event, so we're, I feel like we're doing a good job of promoting. Since the initial announcement that we're doing it here in Starbuck, we had fifty-three hundred people see our post, which is huge.
You said last year at Carlos Creek was about two thousand from your first posting?
People saw the initial, initial post, we have fifty-three hundred now, and that's not just in part of what we're doing, that's in part of the local businesses who have already sponsored us, get, you know, getting it out and giving it exposure and things of that sort. I'll show you guys here.
I should tell everybody that the Chamber has sponsored it, the VFW has sponsored it, the Veterans Auxiliary at the VFW is sponsoring it.
So here's a copy of our current poster, you guys can pass that around, as well as our sponsorship packages that, that we're, we're doing, and I see you guys got a print out there, that's awesome. So what we try to do for the local businesses to, we try to give them as much exposure as we possibly can. I've always been a big believer, I have a background in combat sports, I was an athlete for, for many, many years and I was sponsored by many, many businesses. And I've always been a big believer in is if somebody gives you some money to promote their business, you promote their business. It's not just a thank you when that, when it's done. You get out there, you do some videos, you take some photos, you talk about their product. You get their logo in front of as many people as you possibly can get in front of because that's what they're paying you for, right? And then at the end of the year, it's a tax write-off for them, so the businesses that have jumped on board already are, are, like I said, fifty-three hundred people have seen that initial post and that poster. We also do very large banners for each of the businesses. They can have this hanging up outside their business or in their business. There are specific businesses that have been granted lifts, so Army National Guard usually gets the vehicle pole because they provide the hump beam, reduce the path, and yeah, it's a pole. My apologies, that's probably loud. The County Line Liquor is doing the keg lift and things of that sort, so each one gets their own lift with their own banner specifically for that lift. We also do shirts, this is last year's shirt. With all the logos on the back as well, and each one of the athletes gets one of these. So we try to go out of our way to really make sure that the local businesses, and I wanted to keep this local as much as I possibly could, I wanted to keep this local, I didn't wanna pull in businesses from, you know, Alexandria, even though I did. I wanted to keep it more Starbuck-based. Chris Johnson with County Line Liquor lives here in the area, so I went ahead and kept him as a sponsor because he's always supported us, and then Shutter's Towing has been very, very, very good to us. So we kept them on board as well, but everybody else that you see here is local businesses and I have a few more that I'm gonna be chatting with to see if we can't get them on board as well. If you guys have any suggestions on businesses that would love to support the event, I don't feel like we're gouging anybody. I feel like we're making it very affordable and again, like I said, at the end of the year, it's a tax write-off for advertising purposes, so. If you guys have any questions, I'd love to answer those questions for you.
I should, should mention that Nick's Starbuck resident for what, nine years now about?
Yeah, we moved up to two thousand sixteen, transplants from Iowa, so.
You work as a dispatcher for, is it the county or the?
Douglas County, yeah.
Douglas County?
Yes.
So, I really like the idea, I love, you know, bringing new events to the area, you know, very family-friendly, friendly event and stuff like that. I'm just curious, when you guys headed to Carlos Creek, did you have security, like with the volume of people, that's kind of where I'm concerned about?
We usually have, so I'm, I'm the manager of Nordic Warriors Boxing Academy and we usually have those guys out to help us oversee who's coming in and out of the event, making sure that they have wristbands. Not so much security because we really haven't had that much of an issue. Now, you guys are more than welcome to come down, hang out, enjoy yourselves, watch the event and you know, if something transpires, which I, I doubt it ever would, at least you guys would be there.
For this event, do you guys have like alcohol or anything as well?
Yes, we do, we do. That's for the spectators, obviously, athletes won't be drinking until after when they celebrate their wins. But yes, we are having the tavern serve mixed drinks and, and regular domestic beers as well as loose meats. And then I'm gonna chat with the guys at Minnewaska House to see if they wanna do some barbecue and their craft beers, so there's a little bit of a variety there.
Just a quick note on the tavern, they'll need to get appropriate approvals from the state to be able to serve down there, but I know she's working on that.
Perfect. I kinda left that to them and
Yeah.
Said I'll, I'll promote the heck out of it, and we're actually gonna do an after-event gathering there just to kinda bolster their sales and really get them some promotion, so.
So, and then is it free admission, like is it gated access to get into the park at that point?
What we're gonna do is we're gonna have people stationed at each end and we'll have wristbands, so kinda just do the loop to get out.
Yep.
And then it is only ten dollars, so we just ask ten dollars to help cover the cost of, you know, travel. Because my partner comes up from Sioux City, Iowa, which is a four-and-a-half hour drive, he has to rent a truck to carry all the weights and things of that sort. So just to help cover the cost of that, ten dollars, and I feel like it's fairly reasonable. Children are free.
Okay.
So, and we are gonna, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce, we are gonna have a big bouncy house for them and there'll be music and great food and it'll just be a fun event.
So I think the parking lot is gonna fill up pretty quickly then, you know, if we're looking at, you know, three, four, five hundred people. So we'd have to like coordinate maybe some traffic with local police or county sheriffs?
Yeah, that would probably be something.
Maybe we'll have to get a, a bus or something, bring them from the airport to the event or something like that, you know, if we need additional parking and-
Yeah, and for our end, I mean, it would just be coordination with us and then-
Okay. Is there a charge for the posse assistance? Okay, I will do that and I'll get with the sheriff. Okay. Perfect.
Do you have insurance for this?
We do.
Liability insurance?
Yep, and I have a copy of that coming for you guys, Tim was gonna get it to me. Since it's a USA sanctioned Strongman event, we pay a sanctioning fee for that, a pretty, a pretty hefty one, but they do provide insurance with that sanction.
Would list like Starbuck as, City of Starbuck is additionally insured. I, I can talk to you after I can show you this.
Yeah, and if that's something that we need to do, we can
Okay.
Go through those hoops.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
If things went well this year, would you plan on staying here again next year or is it just a-
Absolutely, I mean, as long as, you know, we've got the community supporting it, the local businesses supporting it, 'cause not, not only do I wanna, I, I wanna grow them, but I also wanna grow too, right? The more they help me be visible, the more we can make this a bigger thing and absolutely, I would love to keep it here.
Well, my fear is that you grow too quickly and will be too small for you and you'll have to find somewhere else then too, so, you know, it sounds like a great-
That's a good problem to have.
Right.
But a, a, at this point with, you know, having almost three hundred the first year, just under five hundred the next year. I don't know, I feel like we could, you guys tell me, I feel like we could physically maybe pack about a thousand people down there at the park?
I think that's a safe estimate of what we're, our threshold is at probably.
Sounds po- possible, yeah.
Cause you guys used to do the street dance down there.
Yep.
We just, the parking situation, we'd have to figure that out. I know that during the Dragon Boat, they, some people do park on the grass. I don't know if you guys care about that this year for the Berserker Cup or not.
Well, I, I guess you guys are gonna be using a lot of the area though too, so we wouldn't wanna park on the grass because that would take away from the area where you're-
Right, so the area I think we plan on using is the area just behind the jungle gym, the swing sets area, the play area. The food trucks can park where they have the power outlets or the vendors can park where they have the power outlets. We'll use the cement slab right behind that for the vehicle pole, because it's nice and straight and cement. And all that to the backside towards the entrance could be used if permitted to have some parking.
There's a nice area on the north side of that driveway.
Yeah. And I don't know if Gary has said anything or not, but I'm hoping to make Starbuck a home for some of the events that I wanna do. I have aspirations for a concert series next year, maybe do like a Saturday in the park, have a couple bands and food vendors and things like that. Make it a real nice, family-friendly thing. They did that back home, where I'm from, Sioux City, Iowa, they had something called Saturday in the park and they had like four bands all day and everybody just came out, threw down a blanket and enjoyed themselves and had a good time, so I hope to do something like that, so. I really wanna try to bring as much as I possibly can to the town.
Is there anything you need from us then, from the city level?
Uh, from the city level, just push, promote it. The more people that see it, the more people that wanna be a part of it, the more we're gonna be successful and I just as, it's not so much a money thing for me. If I can see a sea of people, they're enjoying themselves and having a good time, that's what's important to me, so.
I don't know if we've got it on our access channel or-
Yep, it is, mm-hmm.
Yeah, we could probably put something on our website. I'm sure the Chamber of Commerce will too, you know, and stuff.
Well, whatever you guys- Oh, okay. Whatever you guys need from me, I mean, just get ahold of me and I can get you, we have Facebook banners, we have the copy of the banner that's gonna be printed this year, I'm just holding off on printing until I speak with Minnewaska House and maybe a few others, potential sponsors. And then we'll get it printed and all up over town and the surrounding areas. So i- if you need any graphics or anything like that for websites or things of that sort, let me know.
We got our Heritage Days celebration coming up over the Fourth of July, it'd be nice if you had some banners up there.
Well, I'm hoping to have this large banner for this year, I've got, when I did the graphic, and I don't have the graphic on me, but when I did the graphic, I went down, took a picture of the beach and the park area and put that on the big banner, so it's, it's, it looks real nice. I'm hoping to have that printed and maybe we can have some kids walk through the parade or, or something during Heritage Days.
That'd be a really good idea.
Maybe promote the event, so. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Chris here in charge of the parade.
Lining them up.
Making sure where everybody's supposed to be.
This is Chris Crackey from the Pope County Tribune, Nick Rogers and-
I have many, many hats, but one of my hats is I, I write for Tim Douglas at the Pope County Tribune.
Oh, beautiful.
If I can get contact before you leave, that'd be great.
And then reach out when you-
So she'll give you a lot of publicity.
Yes, I'm hoping for that.
When you think of the Saturday music in the park type thing too, obviously not this year, but next year, whatever, love to discuss that option as well too, because that's-
I think that would be, I, you know, music, food,
Yep.
Fun, kids, you know, playing, all that good stuff. We spend too much time with our faces in front of a screen, right? We need to get out and enjoy ourselves and forge, you know, relationships and things like that, so.
Enjoy what little time in the summer we get up in the north, so.
Right, exactly. Any other, anything else?
If anybody else has any questions.
I think it all sounds really good.
All right, thank you guys for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Nick.
It's a good time.
He's gonna toss the keg into the lake.
We haven't made any motions.
Do you have any questions?
Just wanted to know if we've-
No, we have to do that at council. Well, we did approve it though, didn't we?
Well, no, but we can approve it.
So the next item on the agenda is a discussion with HRA, Lori Bodlin and Jason Murray to talk about housing in Starbuck, so. They are with the Pope County HRA EDA.
Perfect, well, good afternoon, council. For some time, HRA EDA have been talking housing options in Pope County, looking at more of the single family. Obviously, we've got a great partnership with Cody Nelson on the town home rental side of things and one of our challenges moving, moving into this has been land availability, lot availability and that stuff, so a lot of the conversation has, has stemmed around development from the standpoint of lotting, infrastructure and that, so we've tried to focus on originally looking at land that's already served by infrastructure, trying to, trying to figure out the best way to maximize that existing infrastructure. Unfortunately, it's been a big challenge. We've got information, we've been looking at property for the last, for years, year, year and a half, I mean, it's been, I know mayor, we've reached out to the mayor on some conversations on some property and that stuff and we don't have anything tied up right now, but what, what I'll share with you- And we don't have anything tied up right now, but what, what I'll share with you is we're, we're seeing numbers. When we have to buy land, extend street, extend water and sewer, it's getting into about that fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars a lot, uh, once you start to look at that development side, and that's, that from a financial standpoint is, is very challenging. So, I think, uh, our scope has been more around, when we look at it, more around the smaller home. I know the tiny home conversation's been up, that, that twelve-hundred, nine-hundred square foot and less, with hopefully a garage has kinda been our target, and making that work. And I know Lori's had some conversation with, with contractors and developers on that side. I've been more focused on the, the land development side, and Lori's been more on the contractor side. So, I guess from a, from a conversation standpoint with the HRA EDA, just looking at some options as far as creating a partnership, uh, potentially with the city, and we've gotta do this with other cities in Pope County. So, this is our first for, foray into single-family housing development. Uh, so what we do here is going to set the model for how we pro- uh, progress with the county and that. So, I guess from a HRA EDA standpoint, from a feedback, uh, just looking at opportunities as our way to partner. Um, I'll tell you this, that street sewer and water, that fifty, fifty to fifty-five thousand. Street and storm, uh, street and curb, I should say, are about that twenty-five thousand, and then sewer and water is about the other twenty-five thousand. So, it's just trying to figure out what that best way is, is trying to extend sewer and water with paving, curb and gutter. We talked about, can we push paving, curb, curb and gutter later? Uh, but that's just kinda kicking the can down the road and putting it on potentially the residents, and putting that cost, further cost on the residence side of things, so. No easy, there's no easy solution to it. That's been one of our challenges, so. Um, Lori, any, uh, anything did I miss?
We just want to be able to create something exciting in Pope County. Of course, my love is Starbucks, but, um, we did find a piece of land that we would like to, to work with and develop, but the cost of it is, is more than our budget allows us to do. Um, so what we'd like to do is partner with the city and do this project, and have it be a model for other towns to look at, oh my gosh, what did they do in Starbucks? Um, my concept has been tiny homes for a long time. I think, I see a lot of single moms, widows. We don't need all the stuff that we collect out over the years, where, you know, have to downsize. And to me, if we could have a nice little area that's a community of tiny homes to, and at least they would still own it, they would be proud of it. I just think that's the way to go. Um, Larry Kittleson and I have talked about this for years. When it first came out and, um, the piece of land that we're looking at has options to probably have eventually seventeen homes on it. Um, thirteen to begin with, but, um, there are four homes that are located there that we do not want to push anyone out of their homes. That's not what we're here for. But we want to create new things. We wanna create more people wanting to stay in Starbucks or move to Starbucks. Um, I think it's all over in Pope County, every county, housing is a main problem. And second is daycare. So, if we could help with the housing, get people here, I even think the concept that we're looking at is possible, even people just living here in the summer, and then go, go back down south for the winter. Um, I think when you have a tiny home, it's less maintenance, less to worry about. Um, so, but we need help financially to be able to do this project.
Is it, uh, tiny lots then too? Like, the property themselves are smaller than normal?
They would be about fifty to a hundred.
Fifty by a hundred, yep. Smaller lots.
You're thinking specifically of the north, northwest property?
Yeah, 'cause we don't have a formal purchase agreement on it. We've been in, with a property owner, but because we don't have a formal purchase agreement on it yet...
And we don't want it in the paper, 'cause we don't want his, you know, we don't want it out there. That, it's a possibility, and I get his name out there, but maybe we could show him the layout?
Uh, I didn't, I just have the parcel, the layout I don't have.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry.
So, what it is? It's, has the lots on there. But our main problem is, is we thought it was gonna be really easy, and then we found out that the sewer and water need to be redone.
Older PVC or something?
Yeah.
Randy shared with us, so...
Randy gave us the bad news.
Randy and Nick, but...
Yeah. So, to do it properly, we feel that it should be all done upright, not in house. Your word.
Thank you. When I look at you, it just comes to me.
I know, yeah. There, there you go.
So, is this something you are considering a TIF district on, or...
No, no, not at this time.
I think we would need your help in getting the sewer and water updated with maybe the road being brought in and having it tarred and curved and done properly. Um, the piece of land is a little bit of erosion right now, and it's just a gravel road.
Okay, money, Nick, if you have any idea about it.
Well, it's, total project's about six hundred thousand, and it's about three hundred for water, 'cause we, again, 'cause Lori had shared, uh, the recommendation has been curb and gutter because of the, the washout potential, the elevation changes on there. Um, so it's about six hundred thousand for the infrastructure, about three hundred thousand for sewer and water, three hundred thousand for road and curb. So, roughly.
And we met with your city engineer to do all the calculations, so.
Yeah. Nick's been kind enough to give us some rough numbers and, and that stuff. So, I think if the council could, you know, in, in the future, have some conversations around, uh, potentially the role or partnership role in this, and, and hopefully from the water and sewer side, since it's a revenue source for, for the city. Uh, I think the, the HRA could tackle the, the street curb gutter side of it and the land cost to help. Our target in this, when we started this conversation, our target has been the thirty to thirty-five thousand lot price to be, A, competitive, and B, affordable, from that standpoint, to get it moving, to get it developed. And, uh, you know, as I shared, we're at sixty to sixty-five thousands, we're, we're, we're struggling to even, even come close. And, uh, and that's, that's, whether you're in Starbucks or any city, it's been a challenge. We're seeing sixty, anywhere from sixty, in my line of work, sixty to a hundred thousand dollars per lot once you have infrastructure, and obviously the bigger lots, you get close to that hundred thousand. So, um, it's a challenge for every city, as, as Lori has shared, and, and, uh...
Your, your target was sort of a hundred and fifty thousand?
Hundred and fifty to two hundred, I think to, to keep it moving. Um, to keep the, and that's not the lot price, but the whole, all-in price.
Yeah.
About one fifty to two hundred. Lori's got some designs, I think, that, um, I guess right now, even to build a, just a smaller fifteen-nine square foot home, it's two fifty, two twenty-five to two fifty. So, we can stay, I think, under that two hundred thousand, properties will move, and...
These are just options of some homes, what they look like, they're not huge homes.
Our goal is, hopefully, also too, is on foundations, no wheels, on foundation when we talk about tiny, tiny home and a garage, small garage. In Minnesota, we all, we all feel you need a garage.
Where, so, kinda outside the box thinking here, electricity though, would that, I know we have got a couple solar options that are north of town. Would that be an option? Because if people are buying, you know, tiny houses, they're also looking at, you know, the, you know, footprint that they leave behind too, so that'd be a cool selling point to...
Certainly if it can be worked into the model. I know that there's, the area we looked at is current... Is, uh, currently served, uh, I think XL is the sitting up, so. Currently, so, I don't know if there's some sort of agreement there that would have to be done from the standpoint of going off-grid with XL, but I'm not sure what the requirements are.
I know XL does have a program right now for, uh, solar for residential operations, I think.
I know they're pushing a lot of rebates when it comes to your heating systems and that kinda stuff, to lightings, that stuff. So, trying to push a lot of those rebate programs.
I like them, but I'm six foot four, I don't know if I could fit in a tiny house, so...
You might wanna buy one just to get away.
Right, yeah.
So, uh, were you involved in all of the, uh, the old high school property?
Are we involved?
At the school, the school property? We've, we've shared a pro- oh, sorry, Lori, go ahead. Uh, we've shared a proposal, we're, to try and, again, our partnership with Cody Nelson. We've shared a proposal, but the, uh, I believe the district has to work through some, their cell tower and some of those discussions, so...
We met with Verizon, I think, I think we've come to an agreement, but they haven't responded back to us yet, so...
That's what we're kinda waiting for. That was the, before we could even proceed to any further conversation. Um, they were kinda waiting on that cell tower, cell site feedback.
I think they'll be willing to move it, uh, a little further south, so...
Okay. You won't be able to get one, too much junk in your place.
That's what I wanted it for.
Anyway, we wanted to bring this to you because, um, we can't do it alone. So, we're, we're hoping to partner with you, see if it's something we can do. I, it's in a great location, it's very private, I think it would have. Um, I think it would be something that people would be talking about that's happening in Pope County. Um, we had PBS come out from Twin Cities to talk about Cody Nelson's and his affordable housing, and there's a lot of people from the metro that want to move out, but we haven't.
Do you know of any other cities anywhere that have done a similar project?
Pipestone's been the one that, on the tiny home side of things. So, they've been the one that's, uh, been on the forefront. I think they're, they're about four hundred to six hundred square foot.
Yeah, they're more like a, um, I'm not, this is not a good word for it, like a shed, a garden shed type of thing.
Uh-huh.
Um, I think ours would be, well, our hope is to have it be a little upper scale, and just, uh, four miles.
Do you have a total rough number? You're looking from the city, uh, mile-wise?
As, as Lori has shared, partnership, so, you know, on the sewer and water side, if we could, you know, get the three hundred thousand towards that sewer and water extension, and then...
Maybe we could have, uh, Randy get some estimates, uh, for water and sewer, and what would run.
We've got Nick.
They've got estimates.
Yeah, we've got the, we've got Nick's estimates, um, so it's, it's about three hundred thousand, so, for sewer and water.
But that's his estimate, that's not him, yeah.
Right.
We're hoping it's lower. But that would give you another street, and that would be, would become a street that you would get, and then every unit would have their own meter. Right now, it just has one meter reading the places under there. So, you would get money from that, from you, you meant that way too.
So, if it's the property I'm thinking of, which I'm sure it is, is, uh, the street is just an in and out, right?
Yeah.
There is no go-through.
Correct.
But you're thinking of kind of a roundabout?
Cul-de-sac on the end, yep.
Cul-de-sac or whatever.
Yeah, and you know, there are some, there is some grid layout there for some street extensions, but, uh, based on Nick's design, it was just more so the cul-de-sac, making sure it was built the size from an emergency standpoint.
And right now, the city does follow that gravel road.
Correct.
Yeah.
You guys, you mean, yep.
But it's a little difficult to turn in there.
It gets tough to turn around at the bottom, especially with the loss.
Any other questions you have for us?
They're really cute.
Yeah.
They're really nice looking.
I think a lot of people, I think it would, I think, my hope is that they'll oversell, you know, we get the idea out there and we have a waiting list.
Yeah.
But that, that, it's so hard to find land, you guys. It's so hard to find land.
Do you guys have a timeline, kind of, in mind, or...
With, our, our internal, our conversation, when I say our, the HRA EDA, was, was hopeful to have, uh, property acquisition and that stuff done this year with the potential building next summer. So, it's a goal, but, 'cause we've been talking about land, not only from the, for the Cody Nelson partnership that we have, but also on the single fam- how do we create more single-family homeownership to try and hit that affordability levels and that stuff too, so...
So, what you'd be looking for from the city would be about three hundred thousand?
Roughly a few water, and I think if, as we get into the conversations further, there'll be more questions, but as we engage also Nick, and, and Randy's been, we've, Randy's been a great resource, so I do wanna, wanna thank Randy for all his direction on this too. Um, as we get into more conversation, maybe the piece of it being more HRA EDA focused on street curb gutter land, water and sewer city, because we know that's the, that's potentially a revenue source for you guys earning a, you know, a, a sold service, so to speak.
Do you know of any grant funds that are available for a project like this?
There are, but they're, right now, highly competitive. Most, I'll, I'll share, the state, at the end of, uh, end of April, there was a multi-family, uh, thirty-nine million towards a multi-family rental. Uh, my understanding, they got fifty-eight applications, and it was close to the hundred million you're talking about. So, they're gonna artificially pick winners and losers on that, you know, it's just, it's...
I wonder if maybe you asked Tammy, 'cause she's still doing pro bono grant writing for us, right, for the city? Is that who it is? Tammy?
From Woodson's?
No, um, the one that was doing the stuff from the early education.
Oh, from...
From the daycare?
Central Mission.
Yeah. Well, and I guess we could have internal discussions about this. I, I do like the idea. I recognize that there's a shortage of availability of land and homes for people that goes along with daycare. It's a one-hundred percent true statement, so...
It's just trying to find that win-win. We're not for-profit developers, we're not doing this to line our own pockets. We're trying to figure out the best economic engine moving forward, not only for Starbucks, but for other cities too. And the, the Cody Nelson model's worked out really well from the rental side. We hopefully can create that on the homeownership side, from a single-family side.
Well, what's nice is it's not something that happens everywhere, so it's a u- a unique thing where it would set Starbucks out from other people to be like, yeah, they've got a community of, you know, small, tiny homes, and that, that kind of thing.
And our, and the location is secluded, it's really, it's, it's a cool location. It's not like on the main highway where everybody's getting right by, it's very private.
I think, I think the council needs to discuss this, but I, I like your ideas on both the Cody Nelson and the small home thing, and...
Really, you like it on the football field? You're the first person that likes that idea. Or like, ooh, it's such a swamp.
I play football on it. Uh, no, I, yeah, um...
I just feel, I think we feel very lucky to have Cody Nelson, um, when he, um, we were looking for a, a developer, and it just so happened that he was looking to start up doing this. And so, we got connected, and we worked very well. He has places in Billard and Cyrus, and then Starbucks here in Pope County. Um, we're very lucky to find someone that, that wants to do this and, and is willing to help communities.
He's very good to work with.
So, is he the one that you talked with on these little houses?
No.
Okay.
No, they are local people from Starbucks that are contractors.
That's nice.
I've met with them. They have investors in their group with electrician, plumbing. Um, so it's kind of everybody in town working together to get something unique done.
That's been my, been my conversation with the board, is how do we incentivize this? So, it is local contractors, it's local folks, you know, if we get, from the standpoint of the HRA, if we're just the land seller, uh, that helps immensely. We're not the developer, so to speak, in holding the, holding the home and that stuff. If we incentivize it with lower, lower lot costs, and get folks building, and building these, and then selling them, that's the, the value added that we could bring from a partnership to the table.
Would your project by the school with Cody Nelson, would that be more rental homes, or would that be homes for sale?
He's looking at homes for sale on that, and that, uh, he's looking at building a specific size and niche, uh, on a price point that's over our price point. So, we think the market can handle both. We'll see, you know, we'll see what happens. Once, once we get our numbers, can we hit that one fifty to two hundred? And then, you know, I think Cody will be over that. I think Cody's gonna be more in the mid-twos, so...
And I'm assuming, if he can't sell, he'll rent.
He's gotta put a hundred thousand into film.
Yeah, he's got a lot of film. Uh, and that's been raised with him, but he, uh, he has shared that if, if everything goes well, he will be moving forward, so...
Any other questions?
Are you done?
I can be.
I like the idea too, I like the ideas of the little houses, I think they're cute. What we can do for Starbucks, that's what we're about, so.
Perfect, well, let, let us know if you have any questions and.
Yeah.
You know, I think like we said, it just.
Need us to come to another, you know, a meeting or something, let us know and, um. We can, you know, give copies of what Nick did or.
On Nick, yep, yep, I've got the proposal, I can, I can email him to the mayor and tell him.
He did tell us there were things we could cut back, do different things, so, there's all those options, but, but main thing is the sewer and water.
And elevation, I just don't know if we can do it, because of the elevation will follow any, the tumeness, you know, I just think it creates some maintenance issues, so. And some challenges of, ultimately, if the, the city, if it becomes a city street too, you want it up to your standards and that's a part of that too, so.
Well, there's no more questions, uh, we appreciate you.
Yeah, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you for contacting us.
Yep. Enjoy your day.
Yep, you too. Well, last item on the agenda is this, uh, self-service kayak rental proposal, so. Uh, this is, uh, a company that contacted me and, uh, they do, uh, kayak rentals and, and, uh. I think they probably have about eight kayaks and. Uh, cement, FBR cement pad, and it has to be someplace where there's a beach, so it's easy to get kayaks out and so forth. The big issue is, you know, they, there's no electrical, uh, there's no electrical needed, it's all solar. It's all run by, you know, cellphone app and, uh. The only thing is, we'd have to have somebody, or they hire somebody to kinda check periodically to make sure that all the life vests are there and all the paddles are there and everything. But, like I said, the, the big issue is that there's an upfront cost of about twenty-nine thousand. And, uh, but after that, all the expenses on them, they figure it's about a two or three-year payback. On the investment, and then after that, we would get a share of. The city would get a share of the rentals, you know, after, after we.
Who's responsible if a kayak disappears?
What's that?
Who's responsible if a kayak disappears? Like somebody kayaks over to a friend's lake place and leaves.
This company is, in two to four days, they can be our place.
And if you're, you sign the kayak out on an app, I'm sure you get, you get charged for it.
It's sort of like the bike share program, you know. If you don't bring the bike back, they just, uh, charge it to your back.
So the city splits the revenue after they get their twenty-nine thousand back?
We probably split the revenue all along, but it'll take about two or three years to pay us, pay back that twenty-nine thousand.
So is that something we could take money out of the Marina Fund to pay our twenty-nine thousand?
I don't ask the treasurer.
Yeah, I'm hoping you could do it, sure.
Is it there for us to do?
No, it'd be, being solar-powered, you had mentioned like behind the ban shell before, I, there's a lot of tree cover there. And I think for convenience, I think being up by the snack shack would probably work really good, if it was just on the west side of the snack shack where no one, just right next to the building would be a nice spot.
Are you talking about at the beach?
I one-hundred percent agree.
That's why it gets the most use.
It'd get the most use, you get the lifeguards being able to walk past, make sure the paddles are all there, the life jackets are there.
And I have, have looked at that whole shoreline and a lot of it's too steep, you know.
But they could pull it right out on the beach.
Like the south end of the beach or the north end, or down by the ban shell. The problem I have is at the beach, I remember when I was a kid. Ice coming off the, off the lake and it went up, covered the highway, so they had to bring road graders in to clear the, clear the highway. And I don't know if, if that's a real issue that.
If it was on the west side of the building, I mean, the ice would have to push through the snack shack before it got to the kayaks.
Oh, icy on the west side of the building, yeah.
And I think that could go.
They'd have to.
And it's, it's all right off the highway.
Over out.
Yep.
Well, you just have to carry them right down past the swim area and you'd be able to go on right there.
You should be able to pull it right out in the swim and just go along the rocks and.
And the, uh, I know the, the beach does have one or two kayaks, but I never seen them out there.
I asked Linda, they're children's kayaks.
Huh?
They're children's kayaks?
They're small ones.
Smaller, oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, and the fact that this is, you know, not money spent that we'll never see again, where it'll come back to us and it provides an excellent service for, for the people in our community. I feel like this is a great idea, but like Chris said, I think the location is, you know, a prime consideration and.
Sure.
That is the exact same spot that I was thinking would be the better location for it.
By the beach.
But, yep, to the west side of the snack shack there.
What do you think, Randy, see any problems with that location?
No, not really, I guess, anywhere around the beach house there, I think we'd be fine.
I know there's a couple benches there, I think, right, we just have to pour our concrete slab a little bit further west of the snack shop, snack shack.
I guess, I don't know how big of an area they need for their kayaks.
I think it's ten by fifteen or something.
It's about the same size, the ones that stay parked.
Yeah. I think ten by fifteen is what they'd said in here.
No, just, just their rack, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't see any dimensions on it, I'm sure.
I think it was like ten by fifteen.
Yeah, they're just in a cage, yeah.
There's the north side of the beach house too, or the store, the docks and that.
Problem with that though, is that'd be subject to the ice heaving then?
Well, the north side's more shaded.
In the west side, you have those docks, but I don't know if you.
The west side is towards the island.
Yep, and that would see more sun, since it's solar powered.
Okay, yeah.
That's my thought, yeah. Yeah, there's space all around it, it's just, I thought that west side would be good for sun.
Would we have to get Lake Association to, um, pour concrete on our beach? I don't think so, would we?
Oh, it wouldn't be on the beach, you know, but.
It'd be in our park grass is where they.
There's a pad there already, some of it's, there's a pad, there's picnic tables.
Yeah, we got the picnic table and stuff.
No. I think it's, I think it's a great, excellent idea. I know there's other companies that are out there, there's one that has one where the wheels kinda pull up, where it's a semi-permanent structure. Where you can lock the wheels, only city maintenance can do it, and then you can put it away during the wintertime, if that's a concern as well too, but. I, I, I think that the location is the number one priority, and if we're not gonna be doing it because of the fear of ice, we might have to look at a different company that we can make, move it around. Cause I, it has to be at the beach, it can't be on the, by the ban shell, there's gonna be so many people that don't even know it exists, you know, unless.
If it was filmed on skid, you could set it on the beach and just pick it up with the payload.
Yep, there's, I think one of the companies I looked at had that.
Just a steel frame made to set that onto and then the payload could pick it up and carry it.
There's quite a few vendors out there that offer something like this too, so.
I don't know if I mentioned, but they carry all the insurance and everything.
I really like the idea, so.
No, get it on the council agenda.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah.
Council meeting, but I would say, yeah.
Treasurer can look at the credit funds, but I've heard that we're in good position, so.
You guys can spend whatever you'd like. Are they available, like, at any time then?
Yeah, I'm sure it'd be like.
So I mean, you know, there's always those people who wanna go right away in April, they, they'd be available?
As long as they're at the beach, I would imagine, if, if it is something we picked up and moved. If it's permanent and we don't move it, I'm sure it's available all, unless the company pulls them out in the winter.
Unless they take the kayaks in the winter.
I think the company actually allows you to program when you can do it, so you can even shut it down, so that after eight o'clock, you can't rent them, I believe. I know some of the companies that are out there do that, I don't know if this is one that specifically does it, but.
Yeah, I didn't discuss that.
Where it's just programmed with the cellular data that is transmitted of when you can rent it and when you can't, so. Oh, I think we get that on our agenda and.
We'll put it on the next agenda. Are they rented by the what, hour, I suppose, to be said?
Two hours, twenty-five dollars for two hours.
Okay.
What's that?
That's a long time to kayak.
Well, you can just sit in it too, you can.
I certainly do.
Or you could spend forty-five minutes to go down to the edge and have a cocktail, then.
There you go, I'm back.
Hour to get back.
Could the lifeguard say, just check on the.
Right, yeah.
That's what I was thinking, I mean, they could, as they go back to their car, they could just look and make sure everything's there.
Yeah, the lifeguards could probably provide the inspection service, you know, to see.
Can have a little camera that was in the snack shack.
Should these have to be licensed?
What's that?
Would these kayaks have to license?
If they're over ten feet.
Not if they're under ten feet.
If they're ten feet or over.
Yeah. I don't know the lengths are.
Yeah, I'm sure the company would pay for the license, we would. But yeah, that just comes down to if they're ten feet or more. I don't think the state's gonna allow no license for any ten feet, so.
Yeah, and if it's one that you can program a time for, we can still enforce the city ordinance for people aren't there overnight trying to.
Yep.
Kayak at ten to be back.
Yeah, do you wanna make note of that to ask this company if that is one feature that they can do, is where they can, you can program from six AM till eight PM, you can rent a kayak, but it locks out afterwards.
Yeah, but control access certain hours and then winter storage, you know.
Yep.
So does the company own everything then?
Yep.
Yeah.
And the, what is the twenty-nine thousand for for us, just to get them here?
That's, I suppose that's for the, uh, the pad and the equipment and everything. You know.
Okay.
It's buying into the partnership would be my guess, since they're gonna pay off.
It's not a nonprofit company that's running it, so I mean, yeah, they're.
So it's not us buying the equipment?
No, no.
I mean, that's an option, but then you'd have to get into. Apps and app development and.
What would be the soonest that they would be here?
What's that?
July eighth is the next meeting? Except, so how, how long, like, would they be available still this summer, do you think?
I don't know about the summer, but probably yet this year, they might get it installed.
Why, you really wanna get out there on a kayak?
I have two kayaks and they rarely go in the water.
Oh.
But thank you.
Yeah, rent them out. Are they under ten feet?
Two hours is a long time in a kayak.
Well, thank you, everybody, thank you, Ryan, for sitting in and, uh. These'll be items on our council agenda next time, so.
Do you want to, when you're done with the city council meeting, Gary, do a separate story on the light and like paraphrase the ordinance and that kinda thing? So everyone understands exactly, like, maybe some of the major violations of lights are for all homeowners and stuff? Okay, we'll sit down on after that.
You'll save that for the council meeting?
Yeah, if you all wanna talk about it in the council then.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, none of this will go in the favor until our council meeting.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
I'll see you Friday.